Call at 7:00 P. M. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc is absent this evening.
Would you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe we don't have any visitors tonight, Dr. McGee.
Do not this evening.
Then we'll go into good and welfare. And for anyone that wants to address the school committee meeting during good and welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussions. Does anybody want to address the school committee this evening? I don't see anyone. Next, we have no recognitions and announcements, so I'll make a motion to approve the June 28, 2020. You do?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay.
Can I apologize?
Yeah, I do, right there.
I don't have them. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Leo Savoy Elementary School students Julian Torres, who was named first place winner of the AAA of Rhode Island Safety Patrol Patroler of the Year, and Emily Enos, who was honorable mention for the AAA of Rhode Island Safety Patroler of the Year. The award honors safety, the award honors school safety patrolers that go above and beyond in their duties to demonstrate leadership, dependability, and kindness. The process of being nominated involves the school's safety patrol advisor recommendation and the collection of examples from school staff regarding the character of the nominated patrolers. Additionally, the students have to write an essay about what they've learned about themselves through the school's safety patrol program. Based on a review of the nominations by AAA, the state of Rhode Island winners are decided. Both students from Savoy were awarded a plaque certificate and a monetary award. So congratulations. I had the honor of being there that day when AAA came to present the awards and then when Socket Police were there as well. And the kids were very, very excited and their parents were equally as excited. So congratulations again to them.
Is that a picture?
Uh, this is, um, no, this is actually a picture. It's part of my, uh...
Oh, okay. I thought it was a picture of them getting the award.
It's not. I have a picture of them somewhere, but it was, I actually put it in my newsletter.
Okay.
When I sent it out, so. Um, next, um, I want to, I want to thank the JSC Management Group, local Burger King franchise here on, um, on Social Street.
Mm-hmm.
About a month or so ago, on June 10th, Saturday, I was there and they donated $1,000 to Wind Socket High School as part of their grand opening event of their newly renovated Burger King. So I want to thank them for their very generous donation to Wind Socket High School. And it was great. I had my picture taken with, uh, with the King himself. Not Elvis, but the Burger King King. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements and recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Uh, does anyone have any comments or questions for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we'll go into the approval of minutes and I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the June 28th, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes, corrections, deletions to the minutes?
Dr. McGee. Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Now we'll go to the consent agenda and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take any items out of order or have any questions? For Dr. McGee or Mr. Perrier? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I have this evening Personnel Matters update. If you, uh, go to that spreadsheet, we have, where, as I said last time, I believe we're in the process of hiring.
Yes.
For next school year. So we are, we've been busy. We have four positions to date that we have offered positions to and have been accepted. We have a, an art teacher, a social studies teacher, a special education teacher, and a library media specialist. So, um, our HR department, as well as our building administrators and directors, are busy at work trying to fill the positions that we have vacant for next year. So these are the, as I said, the most recent ones. And then if you go down, we have the hourly stipend. As the committee is aware, we have many summer school programs operating right now. And, um, these are the, these are the staff who are, are working and have been, uh, approved for those enrichment and summer school programs. So, uh, with that, that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any comments, questions, Dr. McGee?
Nope.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
I mean, I just did a little bit different this time. Next, we'll go into, we have no subcommittee reports. Um, we have no conferences and discussions, but we do have some unfinished business. I believe this item was tabled the last time, so I'll make a motion to, uh, take off the table the Right to Read Act Memorandum of Understanding. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Now we have before us, uh, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Right to Read Act Memorandum of Understanding. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier?
Uh, I can take this one, Mr. Chairman. So as the committee is aware, the General Assembly, um, enacted a law which says by 2025, teachers and, um, and other educators in the state of Rhode Island are required either to become proficient or, or, or aware, um, of the knowledge and practices of the science of reading and structured literacy.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we are fortunate in that here in Wind Socket, we started this process well before other districts did. And as a result, many, many of our teachers and staff are either already proficient or aware through the AIM training, which is the, the, the training that we chose to, to utilize for the certification of our teachers and our staff. Um, we, we, we're in the process of creating an MOU with the union so that there was an understanding exactly of, um, of, of what the expectations were, the timelines of the expectations. And also, um, we decided in Wind Socket that we would provide stipends to staff to complete this certification. This certification, um, is, is extremely extensive. Um, it, it takes, and, and I, I know Mrs. DiRiso and, and I think, um, Mrs. Morel and, and, and Miss Agia are, are all certified. And, and it took months, uh, to get certified in this. Now, interestingly, in, in their infinite wisdom, the, um, some members of the General Assembly, um, said, well, we, we will allow districts three professional development days for their teachers to complete this certification. And it's impossible, I don't care who you are, to complete the certification over the course of three professional development days. So what we elected to do in Wind Socket is, is not do that because that day would have to have been designated solely as a right-to-read training day. So what we decided to do is we decided to, um, provide stipends to our, our staff, a $2,000 stipend for them to complete this. The MOU memorializes that, but it also, um, specifies that, for example, if a teacher completes the certification, they don't automatically get the stipend upon completion if it's during the school year. We want to wait until the, at least the summer or moving forward beyond this year. We want to, um, look at the months of September and October to make sure that they actually are returning to the district. So we don't want to pay a stipend for a teacher to get a certification and then at the end of the year, they leave us and they go to another district. So that was really the main, um, folk, I shouldn't say the main focus. It's, it's, it's one of the more important pieces to this MOU is, is just ensuring that we're not going to provide a stipend to someone who's going to get the certification and then go to another district and bring their knowledge to another district. So that, that's the, the major, uh, portion of this, this MOU. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know, um, Sue, if, if there's anything that you want to add that I might have missed?
Anyone, any questions?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Two questions. The first question goes to you, Sue. Dr. McGee says the three days of PD were not complete. So how many hours does an educator have to spend to get the certification?
The course details in hours, uh, of 60 hours of participation in service. However, it took most of us upwards of 80.
80 hours.
Mm-hmm.
That's done when?
So it's virtually, it's, it's a, it's a platform of, um, very rigorous activities, um, designed around this research process. And then there's proof of proficiency after each module. So, um, you are constantly being assessed. Uh, you then have an opportunity to go back and revisit the material that you perhaps didn't successfully complete so that we are ensuring that there is indeed proficiency, complete proficiency by the end of the program.
Wow, that's something. Uh, my second question, um, $2,000 is being, is being given to educators who complete this from July 2022. Now, there's some have already completed it?
Yes.
Of them?
Yes.
We have the largest proportional share of teachers in the state that had already completed the process before the legislators changed the ruling that the district had to provide the time within the school day, as Dr. McGee had detailed. And we did not feel comfortable in taking three academic days away from our students, especially at this point in time, um, post-pandemic, to, to dedicate to that process.
So those, those teachers got paid? Or do they get the 10-hour?
So what, what's in, what's, here's what's interesting is July, last July 1st, was it, Sue? Or 4th, when, when the new legislation was, was enacted?
It was changed in July. I'm not certain of the exact day.
A year ago, July, it, it, the, the legislation started as, um, districts had to just sort of figure it out themselves. With this change in, in legislation, districts could then either provide the three days or they could provide a stipend to staff after that July modification to the, to the, to the, to that, to that bill. So anyone that took and completed prior to that received professional development credit.
Okay.
They weren't paid. Um, anyone from that date moving forward would be paid.
And they don't get professional development?
They don't. They, they don't. They, they're, they're getting paid. So, and, and like Sue said, many, many of our staff with that first wave completed it, which was great.
Yeah.
It really put us in a, in a, in a good position. Um, but, uh, you know, kind of another unfunded type mandate and, but, but the good news is that many, many staff are, have either completed it or they're in the process right now of, um, of, of, of completing it.
Just as a, a follow-up to Vice Chair Burke's questions, if we have a, a good number of teachers who are certified before that date, is there, has there been any union blowback? Because saying, listen, we, we, we took the initiative. We got, we got our three days or whatever it took. If it took more than three days, they had to do it to get certified and now we're not getting paid, but they are.
Yeah, they, they...
Sounds to me like that's a problem, and that would be a problem.
Well, they, they, they're not happy. That, that's, that's an understatement.
But they've agreed to this.
But, but the unions agreed to this, yes.
Okay.
We, we talked about this, uh, 10 months ago, maybe? Um, so, so the, 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 the staff who completed it prior to that change, obviously are not happy because while they did get PD hours.
Right.
They, they didn't get paid.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
The first item of new business is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the addition of, of an MLL instructional coach, uh, a new position. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Miss Agia, it's all yours.
Thank you. Um, so Wind Socket Education Department has seen an increase of multilingual learners throughout the past several years. This past school year alone, we had a 13% increase in multilingual learner enrollment. So with the help of an MLL instructional coach, one for the secondary level, one for the elementary level, um, hoping that we will be able to provide job-embedded, um, coaching for our teachers of multilingual learners. Um, not every teacher in the district that works with multilingual learners are certified to support them in the classroom. So the coach will be able to go in and support the teachers with best practices. Um, they will also be able to promote the district initiatives, um, promoting the best practices for multilingual learners in the classroom. Do you have any questions?
Vice Chair Burke?
It's two positions.
Two positions, yep. And I'm hoping it will come, it will be coming from the MLL categorical funding.
Is that where it's coming from? Mr. Perrier?
That is correct. And we did have a pretty significant increase in MLL categorical funding for fiscal year '24. So it will fit into the budget.
Thank you, Rania. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Memorandum of Understanding with College Visions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee has the, um, the MOU in their packet. Uh, College Visions is a nonprofit organization that empowers low-income, first-generation students in Rhode Island to enroll in college, um, and to persist and earn, earn a degree. So they were founded in 2004. Gigi DiBello, our, uh, Project Aware Coordinator, and I, um, have met with, uh, the, um, the gentleman from College Visions. And we've met with him numerous occasions. And this is a, a, a great opportunity for our students at Wind Socket High School. Basically, what, what we would be receiving, we're receiving a lot, but we're receiving a, um, an advisor that would be, um, located at Wind Socket High School who would be working with students, um, around the, the, the college. Um, not, not just the college admissions process, but that certainly is a, is a key piece to this. But, but just learning about college and, um, just getting those, those types of, 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 of skills, the skills and information necessary so that they, um, that they, number one, know that college is an option for them and that there are, are folks, you know, at the high school beyond just the guidance counselors, um, and teachers and administrators who, who are there specifically for the purpose of helping them, um, you know, attain those, those goals. Um, I know Gigi is, is, is here. Um, if, if the committee has any questions with respect to the MOU, I would be happy, or, uh, Gigi would be happy to answer, answer those questions. And, and this is, this, this is not funded through the Wind Socket Education Department, um, so...
I only have one comment.
Yes.
Um, in the job description, there's an item in there, or one of the bullet points, it relates to awesomeness. And the requirement is be awesome. I, I, I don't know what to do with that. How do you, how do you determine if someone is awesome?
Their personality.
I think, I think it's one of those where you know it when you see it.
It is. It's like, it's a person, I, I understand it.
But as a requirement, which I find very interesting. Typically, you, you, you break in, you know, the candidate, et cetera.
Awesomeness.
But that's a requirement. Very interesting. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
Sorry, I, I haven't, it sounds like I haven't talked to anybody in a day. But, um, asking questions. But this is not new. I've heard this from you several months ago, right?
Yes.
This was in the works. So this is the position that's going to be part of the Guidance Department, but separate?
Yes, yes. And, and we, we have been talking about this. You know, Gigi and I met with Lamont, the gentleman from College Visions. Jeff Geo, principal of the high school, also met with, uh, with him months ago. And, um, it, it, it's just a, they, they don't, they don't go into a lot of schools necessarily. Um, they're selective as to where they go. And we're really fortunate that they've, they selected us and they're, they're willing to pay all of this, so this is...
One year?
I believe it's, yeah. Do you want to, uh, speak?
They are making a multi-year commitment to us. They don't want to just come in for one year. And they've secured the funding for several years. What they're asking, um, from us is that we help to secure funding for the summer of 2024 for the programming in the summer, which is part of their whole package, which we haven't done yet and we're going to do with them. Um, but the idea is that, um, we're the first in the state, actually, for them to embed a college counselor at the school. They've been doing this program for 20 years with Providence and, uh, they are extending to Central Falls and a couple of other places. They've already done Cranston. But none of those communities have the college counselor at the high school. The students go to College Visions, the location in Providence. So this is a new, um, aspect of the program for them, a new, uh, area that they're pretty excited to move towards. And I think part of their interest in coming to Wind Socket is because we're not right in Providence. And the idea is it'd be easier to work with students if they're located in our building. But it includes a lot of programming around self...
Attention work campers! Program begins in seven minutes and 27 seconds. Let's go on down, watch the variety show, and get our program on. Remember to bring your mission handbook and have some excitement. Woo!
Is our Director of Operations part of the entertainment?
Are, are we considered the variety show?
Right.
That person may qualify for that awesome.
Right? That person did sound like the awesome.
Vice Chair Burke, I think you have a point there.
Yep, that's the awesome we're looking for.
The, the only other thing I'll add is that, um, in our mind, this is kind of another way that we're approaching the nonviolence work because they don't have a bar, um, of, an academic bar for accepting students into this pre-college program. So they're really hoping to work with students who normally wouldn't consider college an option.
Thank you. Thank you.
So did, uh, just to clarify, so it's paid for, for the school year?
Correct.
But then we have to pay for it during the summer?
The idea is that we would try and raise money with them for the summer portion of the program. That's right.
Well, why would we need a summer portion if...
Because part of their program in the other communities includes a summer program and that's part of the fidelity of the program is that you do the work embedded in the school during the year, but then there's an intensive program in the summer where they're working with students and other students from other communities are all together. And it's held at a college campus.
So we, it's not completely grant-funded, it sounds like?
So we, so we need to come up with...
Keep it going, we have to pay for it.
We, we need to keep it going, whether it's, whether it's locally funded for the summer or a grant that we can...
And we already have a lead on several. So, um, part of the work that, um, Leadership Rhode Island, uh, is doing along with a young person in our community who won that big grant for a million dollars, Miriam Caba, who was, was identified as, I can't remember what is the name of that organization? Dr. McGee, do you recall?
The Pepito?
Yeah, the Pepito Foundation. And part of her proposal included something like this. And so the idea is that that's one way for us to fund the summer. So we're already exploring those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Can you help me understand the difference between the guidance council work that's being done in the school for what this position's going to do? And what's, why the different approach or why do we need, or why should we consider this?
I, I would, I don't know if that is better directed to you. My understanding, Dr. McGee, is that we used to also have additional folks from the Brown program when there was the Brown, uh, college counseling. We lost those positions. The program has closed, not just for us, but in other places in the state.
Yes. I mean, in, in addition to that, guidance counselors, I mean, their, their roles and responsibilities go beyond just recruiting and, and, and advocating and assisting students in, in college applications, in college, um, you know, uh, research.
Sure.
This person solely focuses on that. So this person doesn't have the other responsibilities that a guidance counselor would have, where this, this individual would be focusing squarely on...
Okay.
Um, you know, college awareness and, and college readiness and, and providing students with those opportunities that they, that they may not have because the guidance counselors are spread thin.
Okay.
I mean, the guidance counselors, they, they, they won't take the, it doesn't mean the guidance counselors won't do that. They, they'll certainly continue to do what, what they've always done, but this will be a, a, a point person for the school.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Kepiscus?
I used to have somebody, I think it was called the College Success Program, that would come in and assist students in preparing college applications. Do we still have that person or has that person been lost? And will this, that duty be taken over by this?
So we, we don't have that person. So this is something that, that would be taken over by, so this person would coordinate all of that as well.
And that previous program was limited to low-income students. I assume this is open to all students? Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Good.
Oh, Vice Chair Burke?
No, no, I said that sounds good.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Rivers Edge Arts. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have, um, an MOU with Rivers Edge Arts, uh, which provides some opportunities for our students here, um, in the community, in our schools, um, as well as providing, um, some consultation and support for our students and staff, um, through Bradley Hospital. Um, and it also includes, um, Rivers Edge Arts painting, some murals that would be located throughout the, um, the, the city. So if you, if you go to the MOU, um, if you look at the, um, first page, services and costs, uh, that first is a community project, uh, community mural project, I should say. Uh, that's one piece of this. Another piece would be the, the adjudicated youth, um, evening arts education and training, which is something that, um, Rivers Edge Arts currently, um, has, um, for students because there, there are adjudicated students who are part of, um, both our school community, um, as well as the Rivers Edge Arts, um, community. And then the, the third part would be training and consultation, training, consultation, and support, um, again, through Project Aware Funding. Um, we have that partnership, that, that longstanding partnership with Bradley and Bradley Learning Exchange, um, and Bradley, um, Aware Funding would provide Rivers Edge Arts, uh, with training and consultation services around youth mental health first aid to continue that, um, that work, consultation services around youth mental health first aid to continue that, that work, as well as conducting at least one observation of the evening program, which is the youth evening arts education program for the adjudicated youth. And just Bradley will help develop an emergency plan for the Community Care Alliance. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer. Gigi is here as well. Gigi has had some communication, as have I, with Rivers Edge and with Bradley around this MOU.
I have a couple of questions. One is the funding for this. When I first started reading page one, the $15,000 mural piece is going to be funded by, by the group Project Aware, I believe?
It's all Project Aware funded.
However, at the end of the day, it looks like compensation, we're paying Rivers Edge 20,000. Am I missing a boat, so we're not paying Project Aware, but we're paying someone?
No, Project Aware is paying Rivers Edge the whole 20,000. So the entire 20,000 is coming from Project Aware. The 15,000 mural project is being paid for by Project Aware as part of the RIDE grant that Project Aware has, and then the 5,000, I'm sorry, I didn't look like you had a question.
I hear what you're saying, however, when I look at the paragraph related to compensation, it says that it's WED that's paying for that. "In consideration for the services and subject to the conditions set forth, the WED shall pay to Rivers Edge Arts the total sum of $20,000," et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman?
So it doesn't say Project Aware, it says us.
Project Aware is a grant that the Windsocket Education Department receives. So WED is going to be paying it, but we're going to be using Project Aware funds from RIDE through a grant to pay for, pay for this MOA, MOU, excuse me.
Okay. Who will decide what the murals are going to be? That's my, that's another concern I have.
Yes, for good reason. I understand the history there.
There've been thoughts of maybe having me up on one of the murals, in not a very flattering way. So I want to make sure this is going to be done well.
That's the first I'm hearing of that, but I do know the history here, and I do understand your question. So I don't know, Sue, do you want to help talk about, a little bit about the mural project in New Bedford, and your ideas about why you wanted to bring this to Windsocket?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I figured, I'm not sure what the murals are, I doubt, but our procedure here at WED is when the mural concept and design is finalized, it goes to the superintendent and then to the facility subcommittee. So you may recall, we did a mural at the high school-
Right.
-in the spring, so you would see the rendering as to-
This mural, though, is not going to be in schools, it's a community mural.
Right.
But there is, I believe, one.
Because there's five that's going to be throughout the community.
Yep, but we have one, so you will see ours.
Yes, Mr. Rezo.
Going back about five years ago, Dawn and I worked together with the Early Childhood Education Center to work on some solutions for major early childhood issues within the district. And I have to say that we've received national attention for some of that work, including Dawn's wonderful idea in pairing with Head Start to no longer have inclusion programs within our preschool, but to have pair learners. And that's how the work started. That national attention brought our way a grant called First 10. And David Jacobson, who is the leader of the CDC, came to us and said, "We'd like you to consider doing some work with us for kids that are not in your schools, that don't have the opportunity to attend preschool, because these important youngsters are missing opportunities that are needed for early learning." So we took that opportunity, and part of that work involves something called the basics. And the basics involves five principles, thus the five pillars that will be represented in these murals around the district, all around enticing parents to join an app that we have received funding to push out, to promote early childhood strategies and skills for families to use to promote learning in their homes. So the principles are minimize, excuse me, maximizing love and managing stress, count, group, and compare mathematical concepts, talk, sing, and point, explore through movement and play, and then, my favorite, read and discuss stories. So each of these concepts will be elaborated through the visual concept throughout many places within our community to encourage parents to utilize the app to receive this information, and then to participate in a few learning activities that we've provided. One is called Passport to Kindergarten. That's a program that we hosted at every elementary school throughout the district to have incoming students, particularly those that did not attend preschool, come and learn about the basics, get families involved in what we have to support that learning. And then we additionally offered play and learn groups for families to come into our schools, into Head Start, our libraries, to also promote that learning. So this will be the cornerstone. It's not our own idea, it's been done in New Bedford with great success, in really trying to reach those little ones that we haven't been able to successfully do so far.
Since this is, excuse me, if these are going to be community murals?
Yes, they'll be throughout the community.
Do we need to go to the city council to get the city approval for that, since this is going to be on public buildings, on public walls, I would think?
So the idea is that the HES, which has been helping to support the basics app that Sue mentioned, and we are part of the HES, would be the organization that would sort of own the mural project. We would receive one of the murals, which we would approve. Thunder Mist would do another. There are the five sites already identified. Head Start is one. The city will have an option of using one, but that's up to them. But then the natural four partners have already been identified, and we'll approach the city as a member of the HES to see about the fifth.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
Sorry, these are my last questions.
Oh, no, please, don't limit yourself.
I know we want to get out of here, so I'm delaying it. I, the money isn't, is not that much. No big deal about the money. My first reaction when I read this is, we are hiring, well, not really hiring, a nonprofit outside the school to come in and do some art that's going to be somehow related to the school. And I thought, don't we have an art department? Don't we have our own art students in the school to get involved in this? And it seems like none of those are being invited to be part of it. I know it's a, it's a community thing, but if it's a community thing, then why is the school paying for it? That's another question. And then we also are going to pay for mental health training for Rivers Ed people. So I was really kind of confused at the whole scope. It's not just painting a mural, and it's obviously, I know we have, some of our students are involved in this program, I do know that, but I don't see the school's involvement in this at all. And as a school committee, we should be looking out for the school's involvement in things. So those are some of my concerns, and I don't know if you can answer any of those.
I think those are very legit concerns, of course, and I appreciate your raising them. I will say, the whole nature of the Project Aware grant is about brokering community resources and bringing community organizations together with the school department. So in this instance, the basics example is an example that is about the confluence of mental health and readiness, school readiness. And so one of those basics is very particular regarding maximizing stress, maximizing love, minimizing stress. But in general, I think the hope of the grant is that we're brokering community resources to extend what the school has, and, and also making sure that we're thinking about our students outside of the school department in the community. And so that's, in part, what the grant does. In terms of the training that you referred to, the Bradley Aware Grant, which we're in year one of now, they're supposed to be working with not just school departments, but also community agencies. And so in this way, I was serving in a particular role of bringing, basically making a marriage. Rivers Edge needed to have additional supports around mental health. They were providing this program for adjudicated youth, and frankly, they were in over their heads. And Bradley is supposed to be working with community organizations that serve youth to help build their capacity. So I said to Bradley, "Would you consider working with Rivers Edge on your dime? Not our dime. It's not the RIDE Aware Grant. We're not paying for that training. We're just helping to facilitate that connection because Rivers Edge is serving adjudicated youth from Windsocket." So in that instance, really, all we're doing is helping to make that connection. The $5,000 is not about the training. The $5,000 is actually, Rivers Edge should be evaluating their adjudicated youth program. And so we're helping them to evaluate it, but we're learning from that evaluation process because we want to learn how to evaluate our work that we're doing with the Nonviolence Institute. So basically, they're setting up some pieces to evaluate their adjudicated youth program, which we're then going to use to evaluate our work with the Nonviolence Institute. So in that way, it's a number of agencies working together to benefit youth in Windsocket and to deepen our own practice and understanding. That was the idea, but I totally understand what you're saying.
I do have one follow-up, and that's it, though. Something you just said, though. So this, is this the first time that Project Aware has gone outside the schools into the community? Because over the years, listening at our meetings, it's generally dealing with the schools, it's dealing with the staff, it's dealing with the students, and now it's going out to the community? Just a question, not a-
Yeah, no, it's not the first time. In fact, when I first took the position, and Kevin and I worked together, actually for a year, I met with Kevin weekly, and we sort of, I asked him questions, he helped mentor me into the position. And he was a member of the HES in representing the school department, as I am. And so I attend the monthly HES meetings, the Windsocket HES meetings, and that's all about helping to broker, you know, resources and support in that way. So during the pandemic, the school department received free masks on the regular, on a weekly basis, actually, for a while, for youth and also for adults, which we then sent home to families. Those came through the HES partnership and came about because I was attending those meetings. That's just a small example. When we had the Youth Mental Health First Aid Fair here, I'm sorry, when we had the, yeah, that's whatever we called it, the Resource Fair in May, last year, when we had the free COVID clinic, that came about from our work in partnership with community agencies. So I never do that in isolation. My job is to represent those conversations to Dr. McGee and talk with him about what we want to be involved in. But the MOUs that I've been coming to the committee with have all been about making those connections with community and seeing the school department as living in the community, and how we can sort of bridge those, that gap sometimes. So that's, I think, the way we've been thinking about the work together in partnership, but I don't think it's, it's new for the grant.
You'll sit, Vice Chair Burke?
Yes, sir.
Good. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Next, we have four items. There are bids for different kinds of supplies. Mr. Perrier, are you, did you mention to me before that these are not ready for us to deal with tonight?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest to the committee that these items, all four of them, be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay. I'll ta, we'll table them one at a time, because maybe some will come in, some won't come in, depends. All right? So I'll make a motion to table bid 24-01 custodial supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to table bid 24-02 medical supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to table bid 24-03 athletic supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to table bid 24-04 athletic medical supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
And we have one more item. I'll make a motion to discuss, approve the amended school year 2023-24 academic calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to quote Yogi Berra, this is deja vu over, all over again.
Did you say this last time? Was it done?
I did, and I'm not going to say that tonight. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say this is the last one. But we, in, each, each year, we, we create, the district creates an assessment calendar, which is a calendar of both statewide assessments and internal district assessments that we use pre-K through grade 12. Part of that planning process includes making sure that when we have our parent-teacher conferences, they are situated such that, that when, when certain assessments are given and parents have an opportunity to get those assessments prior to grading periods, and prior to, and those grading periods are really sort of built around, or the, I should say, the parent-teacher conferences are built around that. We have parent-teacher conferences, as you know, each level has two parent-teacher conferences per year, one in the, in the fall and the other in the, in the spring. So, having said that, the good news is that this modification doesn't do anything to the actual beginning or end dates of the school year. What it does is that we have some modifications in our middle and high school parent-teacher conferences. So the new dates are on here. The middle school parent-teacher conferences are October 12th and March 14th, and the high school and Career and Technical Center is October 19th and March 28th. There's also one addition-
They're like a ghost at that microphone.
There's also a, a minor tweak to the, the duration of, of one of the semesters, but that doesn't, that doesn't have a dramatic change, but it is something that needs to be reflected. So I, I don't know, and did any, any director, I know the directors, we worked on this, I'm not sure if anybody has anything that they, they wanted to, to add.
Can't hear you, Mr. Rezo.
I just said he did a great job summing up the concern, and that we just wanted to be sure we had the most current data to share at those parent conferences.
Anyone, anyone have any thoughts? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Having no more items on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:48. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Aye.